Let's call this meeting to order at 9:06 a.m. and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, welcome to the Planning Commission. We have a few little housekeeping things, but we'll do pretty quick. Are there any staff announcements?
No.
And no agenda changes?
No agenda changes.
Then, do we have anybody online? We do not. Okay. So unless either of you would like to speak in the general public comment section, you're here for your item, right? Okay. Then we will open and close the general public comment period and move on to the consent agenda, which consists of Planning Commission meeting minutes from June 27th and July 11th. Does anybody have any directions, concerns, or wish to pull anything from the agenda?
Nope.
Anybody in the public? Okay. Then would someone like to make a motion?
I'd move that we approve the meeting minutes for June 27th and July 11th.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? Passes 5-0-0. Haven't said that quite some time.
Can you count that high?
Okay. Then we can get started with our primary agenda item, 2002-2, actually, 2022-044, tentative parcel map and zoning amendment for Donald Halsworth. And Madeline, are you going to introduce that item?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Annette has to run the slideshow for me, so just bear us with us here through this. So this is Project 2022-044, which is a tentative parcel map and zoning amendment. And the applicant is requesting approval of a zoning amendment to amend the zoning of a 20-acre general agriculture parcel to residential agriculture, as well as a concurrent tentative parcel map to split the 20 acres into two approximately 10-acre parcels. So the subject parcel, APN 048-025-013, shown here, sorry, it's kind of small, but it's highlighted, located at 5403 Pettinger Road in Burson.
To the next.
Thank you. This is the county's aerial image from 2022, showing the subject parcel, which is developed with a primary single-family residence that's down in the southwestern corner and an accessory dwelling, which is up in the northwestern corner. In addition, there are 12 accessory structures and several storage areas with approximately 170 vehicles and farm equipment, which are used by the landowner for their hobby. This is the map, which proposes to split the parcel in two. Both parcels will use the existing driveways, as the split will put the primary residence on proposed parcel one and the accessory dwelling on proposed parcel two. The applicants wish to do this so that they can increase the square footage of the existing accessory dwelling unit, as currently, one single-family residence and one accessory dwelling unit with a maximum square footage of 1,200 square feet is permitted per legal lot. Therefore, the ADU would be converted to the primary residence on the newly created parcel. And this will also allow for future construction of an ADU on each parcel one and parcel two, as well as any accessory structures. There are no other construction plans, though, besides a small addition to the ADU, which will increase it beyond the 1,200 square feet max. The original application to subdivide the parcel was into four or five acre parcels and to amend the zoning to RA to accommodate that smaller parcel size. However, due to the presence of some California tiger salamander larva, which is a federally threatened species with designated critical habitat by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, discovered during the biological assessment fieldwork, the applicant amended their map to just divide it into two 10-acre parcels in order to remove the need for an access road. So this project site has a general plan, Rangers designation of Rural Transition B, which you can see here in blue. And I apologize, there is a little tiny yellow arrow that is pointing to the subject parcel. It's kind of central. Hopefully, you can see it just sort of where the light blue meets the bright green there in the center. This designation is for existing rural neighborhoods. And the zoning, go to the next one, of the vicinity, you can see A1 is shown here in the bright green and the areas that are to the west and the south in the sort of burnt yellow are residential agriculture. The zoning amendment to RA will allow the subdivision to 10-acre parcel sizes as there's a 20-acre minimum for the A1 zone. The RA zone is intended to be a district in which equal emphasis is given to residential and agricultural uses. And this amended request to RA is more consistent, as you can see, with the adjacent parcels and allows for more agricultural uses on the proposed parcels.
Oh, you've got that on the screen. Just out of curiosity, what's the light blue-gray parcel, a couple of parcels above the subject parcel?
Those are larger resource production parcels.
Okay. It says agribusiness, so it's probably.
I apologize. Is that agri-preserve? You're probably right. It's probably agri-preserve.
At your show.
Sorry, I didn't put a legend on there. This application was deemed complete back in 2022, and so it's being processed under the previous zoning code. So we're using the site development standards outlined in the old Section 1720-070 for parcels in the RA zoning district. So this is the view of the existing driveway to the primary residence, which is the southernmost driveway off of Pettinger Road. And the next picture is of the second northernmost driveway, which accesses the current accessory dwelling unit.
Go to the next. Thank you.
The parcel consists of lowland foothill grasslands with some oak trees. There's also a defunct orchard in the eastern and northern central portion of the parcel. And this photo also shows several of the vehicles that are stored. And there is a stormwater drainage, which crosses from east to west, that drains into this onsite pond, which was dry at this time of year. This was taken last August of last year, which is in the northwest corner, kind of close to the ADU. The application was circulated to various county departments, local, public, state, and federal agencies requesting comments. There is a memo that was received from the county's environmental management agency, which included standard comments regarding water supply and onsite wastewater for any future construction of accessory dwellings. Comments from the county public works department were also received, which stated that the existing driveways are adequate to serve the proposed parcel, so there's no road improvements that are required. They also gave some standard conditions requiring compliance with civil ordinances, the county road ordinances, the stormwater quality ordinance, grading and drainage ordinance, as well as the subdivision map act. There were also comments that were received from Calvers Consolidated Fire Protection District, but they had no comments relative to this new amended map.
Thank you.
A biological resources assessment and an aquatic resource delineation was prepared for this project. As I stated previously, during one of the site visits by the biological consultant, a California tiger salamander larva was observed in the pond I showed you earlier. The purpose of that man-made ditch and drainage basin is to redirect stormwater on the property to avoid any flooding within the rest of the property. The results from the reports concluded that the pond does provide suitable habitat for the tiger salamander. And the basin and drainage ditch were determined to be the focus of the aquatic resource delineation, because there's no other potential aquatic resources observed throughout the project area. On October 2023, sorry, October 3rd, 2023, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers concurred with the results of the delineation, which determined that the pond and the ditch are not considered to be waters of the U.S., regulated under the Clean Water Act and the Rivers and Harbors Act. There will be no alteration to the pond. As I said before, no improvements to the driveway to the ADU is required. And the proposed addition to the ADU would allow for a 50-foot wide buffer around the pond. And the area immediately around the ADU is pretty highly disturbed and is not considered to be suitable habitat. So the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service reviewed the reports and the jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps. And in their email response from May 1st, 2024, following their review, they stated that as the reports indicated that the area around the dwelling is highly disturbed and not suitable habitat, and also the report provided conservation measures to avoid impacts to the tiger salamander, they concluded that it's reasonable to assume that take of the California tiger salamander would not occur. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, an initial study mitigating negative declaration was prepared and circulated for the 30-day review period from June 28th to July 28th, 2024. There were letters that were received from Caltrans and the Department of Toxic Substances Control. They had pretty standard comments that really were not relative, did not apply to the project. No comments were received from the public. Potential impacts to habitat for the California tiger salamander and to the western spade-footed toad were identified. And a mitigation monitoring and reporting program was prepared and accepted by the applicant, which is incorporated into the conditions of approval, which reduces the potential impact to less than significant. So this project is consistent with the general plan, specifically policies COS 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3, all of which require new developments be designed to protect biological resources by identifying and mitigating impacts to wildlife habitat. An implementation measure, COS 4H, which requires project applicants to enlist the services of qualified biologists to minimize or avoid or mitigate significant impacts to special-styled species. And this parcel is also not located in any community plan area, so there's no additional policies that apply. The proposed heading of the parcel map is consistent with county zoning code, as the lot meets the minimum requirements for an RA zone parcel served by individual well and onsite wastewater systems. And there's no substantial evidence that the project as a design and condition will have a significant effect on the environment. The project has also been adequately conditioned in order to meet the applicable requirements of the county municipal code. There were no concerns from any agencies and no comments were received in objection to the project from any adjacent landowners. I would just like to add, we have a condition that I distributed to all of you, and I've provided copies to the applicant and discussed with earlier, which pertains to unpermitted structures on the subject parcel. Both of the dwellings are permitted structures, but there are some accessory structures that are not. So we've drafted an additional condition that we would like to add under the planning department condition section. So this would be condition number 2-4, which we've drafted to read. All permitted structures must be remedied prior to recordation of the final map.
How many are there?
How many?
Unpermitted structures?
I don't know how many are unpermitted. I know that several of the structures have been there for many, many years prior to the current landowner having ownership of the parcel. But according to site visits, there are somewhere in the vicinity of 12 accessory structures. And I don't know which ones are permitted and which ones are not.
The proposed additional condition, you only cite one of the resolutions. Would it apply to both?
I only put it on the tentative parcel map resolution because it's specifically regarding recordation of the final map. But we can amend and discuss, add it to the other resolution, however you want to handle it. You tell me.
So remedy would be either the upgrade to compliance if they're not in compliance?
It would be whatever the building department decides how they, what they need to do. Because I'm not sure what the records are in the building department's files. I don't know what the landowners have themselves in their records. So, yeah.
Are they counting?
Can you put your mic up, please?
Are they counting shipping containers as?
Oh, thanks.
Are they counting shipping containers as structures?
Yes.
Since when?
We've had a requirement for them for quite some time.
Yes.
The new zoning code just remind everybody we did, we have something in there saying that everything has to be up to code on the parcel before we issue approval.
Right. They're just asking about our shipping containers as structure. And it depends on if they're temporary or there and if there's power to them and all that kind of stuff.
Okay, that concludes my presentation.
Your final presentation.
Thank you.
I have a question. So when you were talking just now, you mentioned a 50-foot bumper around the area where the salamander might be found, a retention pond. But the documents say a 50-foot buffer around the construction zone. And so I'm wondering why it's being approached that way as opposed to providing a buffer around where the salamanders could be and just then they would have the option to design whatever they do to stay out of that zone?
Are you talking about the mitigation measure? Or are you looking in the?
There's a whole long list of mitigation.
Yes. So from what I understood, the addition would be like 120 square feet. It's only supposed to bump out up to, is it like a 12 by 30? That you're kind of, I forget what you were doing. But it's on the opposite side, the backside, not the side closest to the pond? Yeah.
There's nothing really that we're building that's going closer to the pond. So it's just we're adding, most of it is going on the opposite side of the house.
Right. That's my question. It seems like this is pretty onerous for what they're proposing to do. And it also doesn't describe any prohibitions about future projects actually getting closer. Because once this is done, and it's a ministerial permit, and no one's going to be looking at it closely again.
Hey, well.
But what will you stand on?
You mean after recordation of the map?
Yes, like 10 years from now.
Well, any, any building permit would come through our department and we would need to review. I mean.
But it doesn't say that future projects, it talks only about this project. This project, even if it occurs at a later date, it doesn't say for all perpetuity, we need to protect this area around the pond.
Well, the mitigation monitoring reporting program says in that second column, the timing. Plan check prior to issuance of any building or grading permits.
But it all refers to this current project. That's what I'm saying. It's not clear what area is protected because it describes everything with reference to the current project and its construction.
Uh huh.
It seems like we could simplify this dramatically by just saying, hey, this area within 50 feet of the pond, don't build in unless you want to come back and do this all over again. And then maybe we don't need all this extensive monitoring of construction of something that is on the opposite side of an existing structure.
The only, I mean, whether or not there's truth in what you're saying, we would have to recirculate the SEQUA document to change all this, just so you know.
Yeah. And I think that these are standard mitigation measures that the biologists get from the state and the feds.
I'm just saying it's not achieving our goal. I know. And we've had big discussions about this, about creating that designation, which I understand this is pre our new zoning code anyway.
Yeah.
But we had a designation that was intended to give people a heads up that there could be environmental issues on this parcel and they need to go back and look at those. So I don't know. It just feels to me like we're approaching it backwards if our intention is to provide long-term protection for an endangered species.
Also, in that area to the pond, there's nothing that could even remotely build within 50 feet of that pond either, so.
So it wouldn't bother you?
Yeah.
I feel like that this monitoring and reporting program far exceeds what makes sense for what is happening here. But let's see what everybody else.
So we could just, just to know what we can do SEQUA wise, we can add mitigation. But if we're going to remove mitigation, I think we would need to recirculate it. And if we added mitigation other than avoidance, we would need to maybe have the mitigation.
I think you would have the mitigations if they come within 50 feet of a line on the map.
I'm just talking about procedurally what we would need to do if we made some of these changes.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
So we're concerned not only about the pond, but any structures as well?
I'm worried about that we're imposing a lot of requirements on a very, very tiny project without looking to the future and the possibility of a much larger project that could be much more invasive, that won't have any requirements. So unless we, unless we describe it by what we're trying to protect instead of what we're doing, we're not achieving anything, really. We're doing a lot of extra monitoring in an area that doesn't seem like it's going to fall within the line of the protected area. That's just my, I mean, as soon as I read it, that was my initial thought.
So if I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Plonnick, what you're concerned about is future development on the site, another accessory dwelling unit or some other accessory building that could then impact. And as I understand it, the only real habitat is within 50 feet of the pond and the drainage. Is that correct, Madeline?
But that's not what's described on.
Hold on a second.
Yes.
So we could, to address your concern, we could add a condition, add a mitigation measure that delineates on the parcel map that 50-foot buffer around the pond and drainage area as a non-building area. So that future development could, would see that on the map and say, oh, I can't build a structure there. I think that we typically look at what is proposed, not what is, could happen, because we don't know what might happen. But I hear, I see your point is that we know there is habitat, oops, habitat around the pond along the drainage area and that you feel should be protected. So I don't think, from what I heard from the applicant, that they have no intention of building in that area. And we could delineate on the map an area that would be identified as a non-disturbing area for protection.
Immunosensitive area, whatever we were calling it in our previous code, which I wiped from my brain.
So I would, I guess, ask the applicant if you had any concerns about that.
So one of my concerns is you're, at this point, as far as my recollection was, is the main habitat is the pond, correct? Not necessarily the drainage ditch. So drainage ditch kind of snakes through the property. If we have a 50-foot swath through that, that's 100-foot section that goes through both properties that.
I'm not talking about the ditch.
Okay.
I'm talking about.
The pond, yeah. The pond's fine. And the pond is kind of, it was man-made pond, so it's built up. So I mean, 50 feet around the pond is not touched ever other than we keep the weeds down. So that wouldn't be an issue whatsoever with the pond. You know, my house is more than 50 feet. Nothing's been built within 50 feet. We have literally zero worries about building within 50 feet of the pond, ever. Because, you know, that area gets very wet regardless because it's the lowest part of the property. So I mean, we would have no exception about that, about the pond itself. I mean, it just fills up in the winter and dries out in the summer and it's not that big of a deal. So I would tend, I was kind of, always what my thoughts were is, okay, fine, they found the tiger salamander that's habitat. It doesn't really affect us anyways. So, and then pretty much most of the properties have been almond orchard or been developed or graded or, you know, boat and all that stuff. I mean, they didn't really find any other potential suitable habitat for tiger salamander, other than the pond as a breeding area.
Thank you. Somebody else might have questions for you guys.
Do you have anything you want to add to?
So just to clarify, essentially, what you guys are talking about is essentially reducing some of the mitigations that I may have to do now and for the future.
Because they've already been.
We would have to analyze them, send them back to a biologist with the right degrees to see if the alternative mitigation is possible. And then we'd have to recirculate it for comment. I think, so when you add a mitigation measure, you consider whether there's an impact of that mitigation measure that we didn't think about. Just putting a buffer up, I think we can safely do here without having to worry about whether we meet the recirculation requirements. So I think the question is whether you're amenable to adding a restriction 50 feet around the pond that, for it to just not be developed in perpetuity around that pond.
Isn't that kind of what it basically says that I can't build in within it now? I mean, because it's considered habitat. I can't disturb it. I can't.
The issue, I think, is that someone in the future, whether it's you or someone else who might buy the properties, I want to build a, something within that 50-foot buffer. This would be shown on the map so that they would see that. Planning staff, building department staff would know that, you know, sort of forever that area is set aside for.
Yeah, because there's just under my understanding, just my general thought anyways, couldn't do anything within that area anyways.
I wish I could reduce the mitigations, but I think that the time and expense of doing that might exceed just taking care of the mitigations for this small project. But in the future, as long as you stay outside that buffer zone, you wouldn't be facing those mitigations.
I mean, I think take would be prohibited regardless of anything we did. So if somebody went in there and did something and killed tiger salamander larva or tiger salamanders, there would be a consequence to that. This would be identifying the area to avoid.
If you knew.
Sort of preemptively, rather than just having a take issue later on.
So it seems to me as long as you're not objecting to the mitigation measures that are already set forth in here.
I mean, we've already agreed to that.
Yeah. Then if we add that condition, which is something that you're apparently agreeable to, that's just a few grand upons.
Yeah, I mean, that's nothing.
That we can receive today.
Yeah, I mean, that was kind of my understanding anyways, that we would have to do some type of take if we did ever decide, which is not exactly.
Yeah. So you would remember that, but the next, you know, sometime in the future, some person who bought it wouldn't know that. And so we're trying to give them a heads up before they spend a lot of time and effort falling in love with building their house over the pond.
Well, two things. One is you'd have to put a stipulation in there that as long as a tiger salamander's endangered, then you have restrictions because it could come off the endangered species. So you don't want to do that forever for no reason. And the other, my other question was, why are we requiring a lot split for 150-foot addition on the house?
Because the residence has to stay below 1,200 square feet because it's an accessory dwelling unit.
Not anymore because it's not going to, it won't be an ADU. It will become the primary residence. residence.
That's why we're splitting it, that's the.
Why are we splitting it?
They're splitting it because they have, right now, it's a house plus an ADU, and the building they want to expand cannot be an ADU if it's gonna go larger than twelve-hundred square feet, so the only way to do that is to create a parcel where it's the only house, you can't have two full-size houses on the same parcel.
Okay.
How do you guys want this new condition to read?
I have some language. So I think we would need to add a mitigation measure, um, and I would say that a fifty-foot buffer around the pond shall be delineated on the parcel map, identifying the area as sensitive habitat and a non-disturbance area. It would be, the timing would be at the parcel map recordation, it would be the owner's responsibility, the surveyor, um, and the, um, the verification would be by the county survey, if you, they would check the map. I would add that language as a condition, um, to the map under the planning provisions as well.
I think, it sounded good to me, but I think Commissioner Roby raised a good point, so long as.
Yeah, I agree.
Tiger salamander is protected.
I.
For a protected species in general.
So, procedurally, I'm not sure how we would do that, as long, I mean, we could put it in there, but once it's recorded, it's recorded.
Exactly.
In order to come, you would have, if it were to come off the endangered species list, then you would need to amend the map to remove that. It sounds like it's really not a buildable area anyway, I don't know that makes that much sense to go to that level of detail, but we can certainly add that language if that's what you want. And I suppose if it were to come off prior to his recording the map, then it wouldn't be necessary. That's unlikely to happen, knowing how the federal government works, and I'm sure that they want to move forward with recording this map as quickly as possible.
Would that, at that point, pertain to the rest of the mitigation measures that I would have to do for an endangered species, if it was no longer endangered also then? To have all the list of mitigation measures that I have to do, if they decide that all of a sudden it's not endangered, why would I be subject?
The likelihood of all of a sudden it being removed is very remote.
It is, and it takes years, it takes years for that process.
If that was to happen in the future, you could always get a biologist, get them to say there are no longer any endangered or protected species in this area, and you could amend the map, but that's always true, we don't need to say that.
Okay.
And also, once the final map is recorded, this project is done, so we're not really conditioning the zoning so that it goes on forever, we are gonna identify it as a sensitive location in our maps for the new provision of the zoning code that we talked about, but the, um, once the project is done, things that are allowed by right are still gonna be allowed by right, there would be some fish and game consequences to certain types of by-right building, but I don't know that the mitigation measure is going to apply to subsequent, yeah.
I don't think the mitigations will continue to apply after this project. You would come back in, when they look at you, let's say you were gonna build a, somehow you just, you won the lottery, you're gonna build a huge house up there, and you come back in and you've designed it up on the hill, and it's away from everything, then somebody in building and planning are gonna look, they're gonna see it, and they're gonna see that you're not in that area, and you're not going to have mitigations. The only time they're gonna look any closer at that area is if you were trying to develop something within that buffer right around the pond. So these are one-time mitigations, the monitoring.
Okay.
Correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so it sounds to me as if we don't need to put in anything saying so long as it's amended, it's protected.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Roby, it just, I don't know that it.
Gives us any medicine at this point.
Yeah.
What possible?
Not in the next couple months.
No, but Alderberry was on the endangered plant, and it got removed, so.
Really?
When I first moved here, the Alderberry bush for the.
Elderberries are still on it, yeah.
Oh, no, it was the beetle.
It's the beetle that, yeah.
The beetle got removed. Yeah, it was a pest somewhere else, but we were protecting it here. They should have tore the grass off.
I don't see anybody else who would like to speak, but we'll open this up for public comment, and close it for public comment, you could still talk, if you're not public. So is there anything else you feel like we should know?
I mean, I mean, not, nothing unless anything else, I mean, the main thing of this project is so I can expand my home to have a bit more room in my house for my family, that's I've been prevented from doing for years now, we've been going through that.
So, do, does somebody want to, let's hear the recommendation with the amendments.
Okay, so staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the board of supervisors that they adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and with the additional mitigation. Adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2024-015 as amended, and recommend the board of supervisors amend the zoning of APN 048025013 from general agriculture to residential agriculture as shown in Exhibit A in said resolution, and adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2024-016 as amended, and recommend the board of supervisors approve to end of parcel map 2022-044 as shown in Exhibit A in said resolution, based upon the findings and mitigations contained therein.
Does someone move?
Not quite.
Our editor would like to make a suggestion.
Editor-in-chief, first, the Resolution 2024015 as, with the proposed amendment, I, and would we be adding this to that one too?
Yes.
I have no objection or suggestions on 015.
Okay.
016, uh, just a few questions, uh, suggestions. On the second page, on the little 16, um, up near the top of the page, the second, the first full sentence, letters were received from Caltrans and Department of Toxic Substances Control with standard comments that did not apply, I would add the word specifically to the project, in case somebody gets their feelings hurt that they're supplying comments that don't apply. Second page, unnumbered.
Sixteen. Res, 16.
016. We're at the top. Letters were received from Caltrans, got that? Okay.
It did not specifically apply.
Yeah. And then, since, uh, under finding two in the evidence, we end up saying the subject parcel is not located within a special, specific, or community plan area, um, I suggest that up in the finding, number two, we take out the phrase, "any applicable, specific, special, or community plan." So it just reads, "the proposed map is consistent with the general plan, county ordinance, and general subdivision ordinance."
Peter, can we amend the findings? Don't the findings have to stay standard or design?
That language is, I don't believe ever.
You turn your mic back.
What?
That language is what the code says, in order to approve it, those are the findings we need to make, so we're just repeating what the finding is.
Yeah.
It's just ticking off the box.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. So we'll just leave it. In finding number four, on the evidence, about halfway down, the line starts with the word service, USFWS, reviewed the most recent BRA, I think we had to spell that out.
Oh, yes.
In finding five, in the evidence, the second, the third sentence, "the existing driveways would continue to serve the project and meet without the S."
That out.
In finding nine, um, I think we need to make it clear that both, uh, Cal Fire and the district provide protection, so I'd say, uh, there's substantial evidence in the record that structural fire protection suppression services will be available through both the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection and through the county, et cetera, et cetera. Then, just to satisfy my curiosity, uh, under the Public Works conditions, under 32G, can you make sense for me of dedicate a sixty-four-foot road and public utility easement, thirty-two-foot half width from the center line for Bettinger Road, what, what does that mean?
So the county standard for a public road is a sixty-four-foot wide, um, road and PUE, um, and what they're asking for is, since they only control half of the road, the property goes to the center of the road, they can only dedicate that half width.
But they're not needing to dedicate anything, because it's all existing, right?
Well, they're just dedicating, I, I don't, um, Madeline, you know, is, is there county right-of-way there?
Yes.
And do they have the full county width of?
I assumed so, but I, maybe not, and that's why the condition is in there.
So, in, typically with the parcel map, if, if you have, you know, it could be a prescriptive road, or it could be, you know, just the road bed that the county owns, and Public Works always requests that the applicant dedicate the right-of-way, um, to meet any future needs of expansion or, or, you know, drainage improvements or anything like that, so that what, what he would be required to do is shown on the map, that thirty-two feet from the center line of the road, the edge of his property, would be dedicated to county for the road right-of-way.
So if there was only twenty-five feet, because it was an old road, we'd have to dedicate the additional.
Yeah, and it's just something.
Dedicate means to deed over to the county, but?
Yes, yeah.
An easement, not. An easement. You can continue to use it as a chance, unless the county actually comes in to do major improvements.
Well, why does it stay dedicated sixty-four-foot road?
Because it, it's only, you're only responsible for half of it.
Well, I know.
Um, it is awkwardly worded.
I mean, if it makes sense, everybody.
I've done projects where it went right across the property at a diagonal, so you had to dedicate that full width.
What a, okay, I guess, as long as it makes sense to everybody in the bureaucracy, what this says.
Yeah.
I won't stand in the way, and if you have no objection to whatever the language means.
I would have worded it differently, but I'm not an engineer.
Okay, and that, those are my comments.
Does anybody have any objections to any of Commissioner Ladish's edits?
I do not.
I do not. Okay, see, then we want to incorporate them. Okay.
Since there's a motion on the floor.
Yes.
Commissioner Lozada would amend his motion to include those changes.
That's where I was headed.
Yeah, so I'll remove, or, excuse me, not remove, I will move again.
Amend your motion.
I will amend my existing motion.
With the amended concerns raised.
So we have a motion.
I will second that.
And a second, all in favor. Why? Any opposed? None? Yet another item passes five, zero, zero. Thank you.
So since this is a zoning amendment, it automatically goes to the board of supervisors, so it's been given its schedule.
So, when do you expect?
Thank you.
As quickly as we can on the agenda.
The second meeting of October.
So I'm a car guy.
What's that?
I'm a car guy.
Yeah?
Yeah, and I'm dying to ask what you got to. I'm dying to ask what your most prized vehicle is in that.
That'd be hard to pick, we've got a lot. My dad's been collecting for, like, probably fifty-some-odd years, so.
Wow, okay, I can only imagine.
He's got a lot of cool stuff.
Good luck on that.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys' time, thank you. So are we all done?
You're done, you're done with us. Now you get to go see the board.
And that is when?
The second, you know, October, which, and Lisa, I, well, we. She's gonna tell you.
She wants you to turn. Madeline might turn on her mic, yeah.
Sorry, uh, that would be October twenty-second?
Yes.
Will work for you? Typically, there is less discussion there.
Yes.
About this kind of thing.
Yeah, I would.
Okay, we have no informational items, does any commissioner want to make a report?
I'd like to say something. We spent how many months working on the Greenhouse Gaps Initiative? Okay? And only to find out that. Calvera Unified School District discontinued the buses, and now we have thousands of parents driving their kids to school, and I'm just curious, is there something that can be done to help? I mean, is there something that any of us can do in the county to help? Are we allowed to ask a question like that? You're looking kind of nervous over there. Am I always making you?
I think we can't, I think having a discussion about how to help is, is sort of not on the agenda.
But I thought you were past that agenda part, aren't we?
Doesn't, but we'd have to put it on the agenda to have this, like, a discussion about it. I will say the notion, the notion that the county can do anything about the bus, like, what bus service is available at the schools, we have, like, no control over that.
I'm just bringing it up because there's a lot of accidents occurring now, and my foreman's wife was just in a terrible accident a couple day, a few days back, and it just seems unconscionable that we went through all these efforts to mitigate our emissions, and here we are now getting rid of a few buses, and now we have thousands of cars running down our roads every day, it just seems counterintuitive to me, and I wish there was something we could do about it.
We're not gonna have the discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, sorry, I'm done.
You could ask to have some agenda, but I don't know what we could do about it.
Yeah, I know, but I wish there was some way.
Well, say that was a commissioner report.
He's expressing his concerns.
Okay, my commissioner's report is a question, what about the Greenhouse Gaps?
That's where we were going.
I have been struggling for the past several months to try to figure out what has gone on, where we left off, how can we bring this back and get it resolved, and there is so, well, the last I saw was, the board of supervisors had a hearing, I need to go back and listen to those, those hearings, that was in November of last year.
Right.
Then it was on your agenda two days later, it was continued to December fourteenth, and then it was pulled from the agenda, and nothing has happened since then.
It was, as I have understood, it was taken from the planning department, put into the county executive's office, it was, uh, domained to deal with the one remaining consultant, and I have heard nothing.
And I've been trying to work with that consultant to figure out what it is that is needed to be done, and I have been struggling to figure that out.
I drafted a scope of work, I have worked with Teresa on that, and apparently, the scope of work that I worked on with the CEO's office was given to the planning director, but never, possibly not passed on.
It was passed on, I passed it on. But they need additional information in order to meet that scope of work, and so that's what I'm trying to track down, is what actually is the change between what the consultant, the overall consultant has provided to the county, what modifications were made, and what exactly they need to analyze to come up with what the difference is, and that is.
We had a document that the board of supervisors accepted.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's.
In principle.
As, as a working document.
Well, right. And we're looking for, was it possible to soften a couple of those measures? Could we make up the deficiency elsewhere? And that, then it never came back to us.
It has not come back.
Because we didn't, were never shown the actual quantification of the measure, so we don't even know where exactly the deficiency lies.
If any, yeah, if any, let's be gone.
And, and that's, what I'm struggling to get is a very clear comparison, what the changes was, and what, you know, so that the consultant or the sub-consultant can analyze that. And that's what I've just been struggling, I've gone through, there are so many versions and iterations of the documents that.
I might have a chart, that can help.
Yeah, so it's, it's on my list, believe me, it's on my list. I'm getting pressured to get that done, along with a lot of other things.
It is back to you, it's no longer the executive option.
Correct. Well, it's sort of both. I've been tasked with trying to assist on getting that done.
Yeah.
Please don't hold me responsible for what just happened to you.
They're going to call, right?
Yes, yeah.
And they know what came of that.
I think that everyone hopes if we wait long enough, we won't remember what we said.
Well, anyway, so, yes, I've been trying to work on that. I need to work with, you know, Julie and Teresa to, you know, get the fund documentation to the consultants, and it's just been a struggle for me to get what exactly it is that they're supposed to be looking at.
I'll look, uh, the fact that we have a 2030 deadline looming is, any delay in coming up with the document is quite a concern.
I appreciate that, and I recall during the general plan hearings, that was the one item that we actually put a timeframe on as far as the implementation, so, and we're well behind that timeframe as it is. So I understand the urgency.
Ebony, you seen the, the deep dive into the, all the laws and stuff that Kelly was doing?
Oh, yeah.
His contention is there is no force of law from the state coming into the county making us do anything about this. It's all a suggestion, you know.
Unfortunately, we adopted a section in our general plan.
It has a requirement.
That does require us to, a long time ago.
Okay, maybe, exactly.
We can't, we can't have a discussion.
Right, we can't discuss this.
Like, ask brief questions about.
Next, next question is.
Well, I would like to state, bottom line is, in regards to greenhouse gases, we are a net absorber, not an emitter. The entire county's partner transportation, this is a statement, we, we don't, we should not have to do anything in regards to greenhouse gas. We absorb everybody else's, and all of our station would have, we don't admit enough to be worried about, so.
The next question is, when's our next meeting?
We do not have a meeting on the 26th.
Ooh.
Okay. And we'll see what happens. I hope, hopefully we'll have something going through for October.
Just a reminder that IT will be here to help you navigate the new meloxic.
Going to be right now?
Yes.
Great.
They're coming in here?
Yes. Okay. Do we have an idea of when we're going to see the proposed new four-story hotel in San Andreas?
So it is out for public comment right now, and that comment period ends sometime later this month, so it's depending on the breadth of comments that we get.
Yeah, next week, I think.
Are they proposing?
Seventy-nine, I think.
Seventy-nine?
Yeah.
Always.
So that, that's out for public comment. We are getting a lot of public comment on it. We'll be addressing those, and before we bring it to you.
And that, currently, it's public comment on the negative.
It's on the environmental document, yes.
And that's.
Which typically ends up being comment on the project itself.
Yes.
Where's the proposed site?
Right next to the Old Round of Savings Bank.
On the left-hand side, kind of up on the hill there?
Up on the hill behind, there's a little blue house.
There's a little cemetery up there, I think, behind it?
Behind it, yes.
And then we have a couple of, well, we have at least one lingering cell tower thing that was continued. Have we ever heard anything back?
They are still looking at alternate sites.
And then I know I'm in.
And we've got several other.
Letters about others.
Cell towers that are, you know, in the works, and each one of them are controversial. If anyone wants good cell service, no one wants to have it.
Exactly.
Tower in their backyard, yeah.
And will the, the new zoning code apply to any cell tower thing?
Most of them will be because they were determined to be incomplete at, at Seminole, and they're working on, you know, additional studies, whatever they need to do, so they will be coming directly to you rather than as an appeal. You will be the decision maker.
But under the new zoning.
Under the new zoning code, yes.
Okay. Well, that was very.
Far as other planning director reports, the comment period on the short-term vacation mental ordinance ends tomorrow on the environmental document. We're going to probably pull that back and rethink some of that process that we've got there. So that's, that's sort of in, in the works, but it's not going to be coming immediately this year? Good question, I don't know. At this point, I don't know.
Hardwood, hardwood, what about hardwoods?
We are, even the Oakwoodlands ordinance, we are, we've put out, we're working on an RFP for an environmental consultant to do some analysis of comparing the ordinance with the provisions of the general plan EIR to determine if we can utilize that, or if we have to do a separate environmental document. So that's, that's in the works. I'm trying to work on a draft of the cultural resources management ordinance. We have an urgency ordinance that was adopted that expires in February, so that's under time deadline as well. So there's a, a lot we're working on right now, trying to get stuff done. And it seems to run into hiccups along the way.
Let me.
Continuing my commissioner's report, thank you for being here. We appreciate that you tried to deal with all these problems, and I hope you stick around.
Well, I just hope I haven't overcommitted.
All right, so are you ready for IT? Are we going to adjourn first? I can. Then we will adjourn our regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission at 10:04, and we'll all hang out.
Two minutes short of an hour, that's three.